And I have a motion to pull, to call the order for the meeting. A motion?
Second.
Second.
On paper.
Did you add the thing from last week? Remember we put two string on it? Did you amend it?
No, we didn't have to amend it.
Sorry.
Alright. Sorry. And we are entering into public session at seven forty-five P M.
No, thank you.
Can you stand? No executive second time? Can you stay for four weeks? Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Here we go. And can I have a motion to adjop the agenda? So moved.
Second.
Paper. And I have a motion to adopt consent agenda personnel, consent agenda special services, consent agenda business. So moved. On paper.
And I just want to take a moment, Lynn Nizaro and Dorothy Ramon. Lynn is a teacher aide and Dorothy is a bus driver. And they submitted their resignations for the purpose of retirement. And I told them no. They said they are going to do it anyway. Both really, really loved employees here in Kennedy Park. We are happy for them as well.
Okay. And moving on to the business. Approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five Board of Ed Meeting. Any questions? So moved. Any motions, any, any comments, any questions on the calendar? Motion?
So moved.
Second. On paper. The calendar was adopted. And I'm going to textbook adoption.
Sure. Thank you. This is a textbook and Rob is here tonight, so if you have any specific questions, I'm sure Rob could jump in. This is for a curricular program for kindergarten through eighth grade related to Aaron's Law. Aaron's Law was a law passed in New York State several years ago for school districts to teach students about child sexual abuse and exploitation. So Rob and the health teachers have been doing a lot of work last year on professional development related to Aaron's Law with the health teachers. So they are prepared to teach this curriculum in age-appropriate ways to children. It's, we've had this type of work in our curriculum previously. The state had just released some guidelines around it and some regulations around it as well. So this curriculum will address those issues. They, it comes with materials for the, the teachers. Rob did work with his teachers on their training around how to implement this in age-appropriate ways with students. So this program allows us to have some curricular materials that are appropriate for, for children. From kindergarten through health teacher at the high school also deals with these types of issues as well. It has been for, for years. But it was really around the early elementary is where we wanted to be particularly sensitive about how we approach those issues with kids.
So I was at the Health and Wellness Advisory Committee a couple of weeks ago and Scott taught us all about Aaron's Law, which was really interesting. I didn't know anything about it. And we had a chance to hear from teachers at all the different levels, at all the different schools. And it was really interesting to hear how they were teaching it in age-appropriate ways. It was, it was very interesting. A lot of thought went into it.
And so, thank you to Scott as well, who was part of that training and did the training as well. So thanks Scott and Rob for their work with the teachers on this very important topic. So I have reviewed the textbook requirements with Jen, who recommends it to the board for your adoption.
Thank you. I have a motion to adopt textbook Child Protection Unit Step Book. So moved.
Second.
The second step, twenty twelve to twenty twenty-three, grade K through eight, health education. Second.
So moved.
All in favor?
Okay.
Thank you. Business, review of policies, second read fifty-one fifty, school.
Action.
Oh, I'm trying to get my attention.
No, no, no.
Um, ninety-five twenty point six, the rights of employees to express breast milk in the workplace. Any questions? Any questions from anyone?
I want to just acknowledge Gina, Tim and Jen for all the hard work that they put into bringing all the policies to us and all the reviews.
Thank you. Gina is spearheading the whole campaign this year.
Amazing.
Thank you, Gina.
And the policy committee.
And the policy committee. Yeah, very.
Input and critical feedback. Definitely a team effort. I appreciate that.
Good company. Thank you.
Okay, so can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? And on to special report budget hearing three.
How good is the evening?
Hey Kelly!
We are. We have Tim joining us for the presentation as well.
Sorry, I missed the other one.
Let's hope we can hear onto that. We'll be hearing from curriculum development, Rob and Scott with athletics, John with operations and maintenance. I'll be filling in for today for transportation and finally our discussion on revenue.
Okay. So we've gotten through January twenty-third budget hearing one, five-year fiscal trend analysis property tax gap formula and principles overview. We've also got the March fifth, twenty twenty-four administration's proposed budget, March nineteenth. We had the budget hearing two, programs for students with special needs, computer assistant, assisted instruction, archimetric instruction. April second is where we are tonight, budget hearing three, curriculum development for inter-scholastic athletics, operations and maintenance, transportation services and services revenue. After tonight's the last night or?
For public comment.
For public comment.
Mm-hmm.
After tonight, we will have April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four budget hearing four, final proposed budget, April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, the budget adoption, May seventh, twenty twenty-four, budget hearing five, review of proposed budget, and May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, the budget vote at H C Craven Middle School from six thirty A M to nine P M. We cannot tell you how to vote, but please get out and vote.
Thank you. And just as a review of the budget increase for next year, three point seven five percent, I'd encourage the public to take a look at the presentation from March fifth, the administrative's proposed budget for a little more detail on that information. But tonight, I'm going to turn it over first to Tim, just to review our curriculum development and supervision of budget.
Thanks. So as you see on this slide, there are several categories. You notice an increase in the salaries line. That is due to the new elementary curriculum chairperson position. And then I'm always looking at analyzing my budget each year and make some adjustments to where I am allocating funds. And you'll see an increase in materials and supplies this year. And this is to deal with some anticipated new program material costs for next year, particularly in the area of K five science, because we're looking to, we're still piloting a new science curriculum and anticipating some new costs there. And maybe in the future, whether it's next year or the year after, some costs around literacy. So those are things I'll continue to keep you updated on and talk more about in the future. And we can talk a little bit about some of the curricular initiatives for next year, just to talk about where the curriculum funds are allocated. So these are my draft areas of focus for next year. Still developing the details with the administrators, which will occur over the next few months of spring. So in literacy, you've heard me talk a lot about literacy over the past two years. And we continue to evaluate our elementary curricular programs. So I'm anticipating at some point allocating some staff development. We've been doing professional development with some consultants this year. We may continue with some consultants next year based on the areas of need. So I'm anticipating some costs around teacher training and materials in that area. In mathematics, we are reviewing some intervention programs in mathematics. We'll probably continue the pilot next year. So I'm anticipating some costs around materials and training next year in mathematics. And I mentioned we're piloting a science curriculum this year. We plan to extend that pilot next year as well. I'll talk a little bit more specifically about pilot curriculum at the end of tonight in my staff report.
Is the math intervention lower grades or upper grades?
It's K five. Good question. Thank you. Yep. It's a K five program. I'm going to talk about it because we're piloting it. I'm talking about all the programs we are currently under review right now. I'll talk to during my staff report tonight. Give you some more details on those programs. We have, I convened MTSS, which stands for Multi-Tier System of Supports. It used to be called Response to Intervention or RTI. It is the method we use to be, have a proactive support for students who might be starting to fall behind in the curriculum. So it's a process whereby you can give students the skill development and the background knowledge that they need through interventions. So we're reviewing our whole MTSS process. And currently, we're looking at reviewing screening tools, which are what's called a universal screener. It's an assessment you give to all kids to see if they're meeting grade level standards and if not, providing some interventions immediately. It's a proactive process. So I am anticipating possibly needing to purchase a screener and a pilot for next year.
Is that K to five two?
That's, it's actually K twelve, mainly K five for all students. And then as students get into the secondary level, we might not necessarily screen all students three times a year, but it depends on reads. So that's something we'll, we'll evaluate that. Currently, we do evaluate all kids K eight with a screener.
Okay, thanks.
Looking at wellness, we, you've heard us talk several times about character education and about specifically Character Strong kindergarten through fifth grade. That is a character education program. We've had Dave Mack come and talk about it with our guidance counselor at Wampus, Annie Schmidt, and presented on that. Gina and I anticipate recommending that program to you later this year as an adoption. And then also providing training for new teachers. Particularly in our elementary grades, when we have new teachers hiring, there's a lot of curriculum tools to introduce them to. So training needs to be provided to that group as well. And then on the next slide, just some other areas at the secondary level, we're continuing to study our grading practices and assessment practices and anticipating some costs around some consultants or workshops next year in that area. And then as always, there's areas that are specific to the department chairs and the directors. I meet with all the chairs and directors in the spring and we plan out what the anticipated goals are for the summer and next year in terms of workshops and consultants. And so that work, we're in the process of developing that work right now. And then around leadership and character education, I mentioned to you the site-based team is close to finalizing the character education principles. And we'll possibly then spend the next few years thinking about how that applies. And we will put that in the classroom and anticipate some costs around that as well. So those are some of the curricular areas that we're talking about that my budget supports and addresses. Thank you for your support of rigorous curriculum program. Thank you. Couldn't be doing and having the success we have without your support and without being able to spend the money. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Any questions for Tim from here?
Thank you, Tim.
I have a question. English shift towards student-led classrooms and making work public?
Sure. So, right. Dwayne, over the past few years, inspired by a conference that I sent a group of teachers to a couple of times to a school called High Tech High. High Tech High is based on problem-based learning. And when you walk into the school, you see student work everywhere. And it's very apparent what students are learning and studying by walking into the school. Dwayne was really inspired by that. So he's been working with his teachers on making work public. And you'll often see students writing and other projects in the middle school. And, and what Dwayne has been working on, which he just launched, is a website that will, all the teachers are submitting work to him and he makes this work available on a website. So we can see samples of student work. And he's, he's doing it by categories and you can search it by grade or by topic. I'll share it with you again. I had it in an earlier packet. It's going to be something that will grow over time, but currently does have a wide range of student work. And it's a way that, the idea is when students are creating a class project or working on a class project, that typically, in a typical classroom, assignments are for the teacher's eyes only. And when is that work made public? When are kids doing work that's going to be beyond the classroom? And we've seen lots of examples of that in our Global Scholars Program and in our entrepreneurship, where the kids are actually performing for something bigger or science research. It's an audience beyond the classroom. So Dwayne is trying to make all of his English classrooms that type of environment where kids are writing for something beyond just the classroom experience. So it raises the accountability a little bit to the students and also starts to share exemplary work. So that's something that is, what that's addressing.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions for Tim? Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to Rob, talk about.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for this opportunity to talk to you about our proposed budget for inter-scholastic athletics for twenty-four, twenty-five. The budget, this proposed budget for inter-scholastic athletics will continue to support all of the programs that we presently have in place. And that, just to sum that up, that's nineteen different sports, fifty-nine athletic teams, and approximately ninety-eight coaching positions. Participation numbers continue to range between thirty to forty-five percent, depending on the season, with fall always being the largest season of participation historically. That, that always is the highest number there. This is for all eligible student athletes in grades seven through twelve. And last year at this time, I reported that our spring participation numbers were at forty percent, which was a five-year high. That was last spring. I reported that. This year, I'm happy to report that the spring participation numbers for the high school are at forty-four percent. We're extremely excited about this. You know, we, we see it. We've seen it through the fall and the winter. And we're not, we're not really surprised that this spring, we have a strong participation with the, just the way this year has been going for us in a positive way. Yes.
Which sports are you seeing increased interest in?
We have an increase, we're noticing an increase in boys lacrosse. And our, our track and field numbers are starting to get back to where they were in the spring.
Free call.
Noticeably. And our, and this year, our, the flag football numbers are relatively where they were last year as well. So, so that's a good, healthy, you know, outlook for us. And we're, we're excited about that.
Are there some teams where between JV and varsity, there just aren't enough slots? And just therefore, some people just get turned away entirely? Or is that pretty rare?
We, we, not enough slots for, for the, for us to be, to accommodate. We can't accom- yes, we do have that.
Cuts. Cuts. So, yeah. A lot of teams have cuts.
Golf is one. We've had, we've had a tremendous turnout in our, in, in the golf program. Our program is very competitive, but you know, we, we, we use facilities and, and only, you're only bringing eight golfers with you for a match. So to, to take on additional golf teams and, and have students that won't ever get to play in a match, that's, that's hard. Plus the, the facilities that we're limited to. We're, we're grateful for the time that we get at the golf courses that we do have. And that's a, one of the limiting factors that we have to deal with.
Rob, more than eight kids are on golf, though.
Yes, but eight can score.
Yeah.
Not, not that many. Not everybody scores in a match. So that's what we just, we bring, those are the students that will play on a match day. Okay. Let's see. We have the, the participation numbers that I referenced, they do not include the fitness center. We, we have a new position that we've implemented, the strength and conditioning coach, which we're excited about. And the students were, were advocating for this and we, we, we responded to it in time as quickly as we could. But we, we have an average of twenty-five students, not student athletes, just students who are not on athletic teams, participating in the fitness center on a daily basis after school. And that program's going well with student interest and, and new initiatives down there. So, so we're excited about those numbers as well. For program success, this school year in athletics, I, you know, looking at it and I'm thinking it's quite historic for, for what, what the athletes and the programs are doing with, with four Byram Hills teams winning section championships outright, and two merge teams winning section championships. So that's a, that was a strong fall and a very strong winter. We've had girls swimmer, a girls swimmer and boys wrestler compete at the New York State level, where those tournaments are held. We have a thriving intramural program, something that we're really proud of, that getting together with the phys ed teachers and really enhancing the program for what the students are interested in. And this year, once again, offering the flag football at the middle school, which we're excited about in a, in a second year down there at H C C, sorry. Unified sports, another program that we're really proud of, with golf, bowling and basketball. And this, this year, we are in the process of including a culminating event that would take place here, kind of like a mini tournament for the students to participate in. And Section One is supporting this. And we, we let them know that we're willing to be one of the schools that will host the tournament, a small tournament, a one-day tournament for the unified basketball program. We're, we're really looking forward to that. And speaking specifically, oh, one thing, we had several school records broken in track and field in, in the weight throw and, and the fifty-five meter. So, so this year, with, with some of the accomplishments, we're, we're really excited about that and looking to continue to build on our success and keep our participation numbers what they are. And we're fortunate that they've been consistent. Speaking specifically to the slide on the screen, with salaries, our intramural program, as I mentioned, is successful. And we, there's an opportunity that we, we will take advantage of. We'd like to take advantage of it if possible, with unified tennis for next year, either starting in the fall or the spring. We're not sure yet, but we're, we're attending the meetings with, at Section One in Southern Westchester BOSEs, and we're excited to, to be part of that if it, if it does happen. Additional programs and coaching stipends, I mentioned flag football this year, first year was, was a trial, you know, pilot year. It's, we're, we're past that with the participation numbers. So we've incorporated that now into, into coaching stipends. So part of the reason why there, there's an increase there, in addition to the high school strength coach position that we now have in place. A little, we've also increased our event supervision, just for our commitment to student safety, you know, both home, both home and away events. And we're presently exploring a gymnastics team merger that we may be a part of. We're having an interest meeting next week and we're to see the students who express some interest, to see if there's more interest there, or is there enough to really move forward with this. And that is part of what we've allocated in the budget, should that come to fruition.
What kind of technical mass do you need to do a merged team? Is it, is there a number? Is it just totally sports dependent?
I missed the, I didn't hear the part.
How many, how many students like do you need interested in order to explore a merged team?
Or if you just have uneven parallel bar person?
Yeah, for, for.
Is that one person?
For a merged team, if we're, if we're part of a merger, we could have, we could have one. For example, we have our, the girls' ice hockey team. We have two students from Byram who are on the team.
Got it.
So it could, it could be one or it could be twenty-one.
Is there a certain number that you need to field a gymnastics team to go to tournaments?
You, you want to have.
If that merged team comes to.
Minimum of six. And that's, that's small. So you, to have your own team, you, you would want to have more than that. It's the same reason when, when we, we, we had our own swim team for girls and we, we merged this year with, with our swim team, because we barely had enough to field a team. And then the team, it gets to, you, you, we want to make sure the girls are competitive in, in the water. So.
And then they can rest. They're not, you know.
Yeah, and they're not competing in, in every event.
What facilities would they use to do the gymnastics?
Good question. Yeah, that would be, it would be an off-site rental. And there's, there's one, there's one facility in Maia Pac that we're talking with, but nothing has been solidified yet.
So the, the team would have to be bused there for practice every?
Yeah, yes. Definitely, there would be some, some busing request made, but it doesn't mean that it would be, it would be implemented. So for, for example, with ice hockey, we offered it, but the girls decided to have their parents drive them. It was just easier for them, back and forth, getting back and forth. And for equipment, we have six thousand dollars allocated for the, the bleacher padding at H C C to cover the new bleachers that we had installed. We presently have a temporary padding there, but we, it's in our best interest to get a more substantial pad that would, it also easier to take on and off. So that's, we're, we're working on that. And a new net system for volleyball in, in the high school main gym. The net system that we have is, is, has reached its, its life expectancy. I think a little past that. So we need to replace that. And looking to upgrade some of the baskets in the main gym, some of the, the main hoops and some of the side hoops. And some track and field safety padding that we need to purchase for, for the, for the teams. And with contractual, we presently, we presently contract with over fifteen different facilities for our teams. For example, we have the Westchester Community College Pool that we contract with for boys and girls swimming. And we have the Brewster Ice Arena that we contract with for boys and girls ice hockey, just to, just to mention a few. And so the normal contract, the normal contractual increases that would be associated with those contracts is part of, of, is allocated in the budget. And also for, for homecoming, we, we rent lights in the fall for, for the games. And the, the costs associated with that, the rentals and, and the diesel fuel, we have to allocate for that. And for the, the B O S E services, the Section One fees and the Section One dues that we pay, and the officials for new, new contracts that are being implemented for the Section One officials for all of the games, for the, for the fifty-nine teams. And materials and supplies, the rising cost of uniforms, it's apparent, it's everywhere, every vendor that we go to. And we use ed data a lot for our purchasing. The rising cost of uniforms and the average cost of a complete set of a uniform for home and away is approximately five thousand dollars for, for a team. And we, and we really do shop them around for, for a complete set for home and away, the average cost. Some, some are more and some are obviously less, depending on if it's top and bottom, and obviously what, what else is required with the uniform.
How many years do you get, like how many years used to you get out of?
The, the average, we, we like to go with a three-year rotation, because after the third year, you really start to notice that it's been worn. Occasionally, we might be able to push it to a fourth year. And that's, that's the average that we go by. And we have a chart that we keep for inventory charts and record keeping, for how long, or for when a uniform is purchased and when we, when we should look to replace it. And, and then the rising cost of supplies, just to, just to have our teams fielded each year, each season. So that's the makeup of, of, you know, the majority of our budget. If there are any, any questions?
I actually had a quick question.
Sure.
You had mentioned something about padding for the bleachers at the middle school.
Yes.
Is that something that you've thought of for the high school as well? Or is that a particular type of bleacher that needs to be covered at the?
Good question. It's just, it's proximity in relation to the, to the gym floor. It's closer when it's folded up. It's a little bit closer than it is for our high school gymnasium. There's not that, we don't have that concern at the high school.
Closer meaning people are closer to each other?
I'm sorry, closer to the playing surface.
Oh, oh, oh.
On, on the gym floor.
Oh, so padding for the athletes to protect the athletes?
To protect, when, when they're, it's when they're folded up. Sorry. It's when they're against the wall.
I understand.
So that they're padded. Right now, we have a temporary pad that we use.
Okay.
And this would be more permanent and easy to take down, down and off. And it would, it would be there when other user groups come in. If they're up, they stay up.
It's a safe, more of a safety.
It's more of a safety issue, yeah.
Thank you.
Rob, can you explain what's happening for the spring? Because we usually do lights in the spring as well as the fall.
Yes, yes. So we were talking about following our plan that we've used in the past to rent lights for a spring event. Some of the students approached Mr. Saunders and I and Mr. Alcantara and they, they asked if they could present something to us. And it's the, the girls from Fast Female Athletes Stand Together. They made us, they presented a wonderful proposal of having a sports day for, for, for women on April twenty-seventh. We came up with a date. And it will incorporate ten different sports. And the day will focus around softball. We'll have, we have three events that day at home, softball game, a girls' lacrosse game and a flag football game. And then around that, we're going to offer, our goal is to offer ten different sports clinics right at the conclusion of those games. And having teachers and coaches from all the different levels come to help to support this event. And the boost, we're working with the Booster Club to have the food trucks present and T-shirts distributed to, to the, to the participants. And really, so this is something that the students came to us with. And we talked it through with them and then to And then two weeks later, the other students from the other teams said, hey, yes, we believe in this event. We can reach so many more students with this one event for a full day. And that's where we are right now. And you'll receive, you'll receive an email about this within the next twenty-four to forty-eight hours. With a save the date type of type of communication, so thank you for for asking.
And the lights where boys lacrosse the year before had made a decision, they didn't want to play under the lights, they would rather have a afternoon.
Correct, the boys didn't didn't care for the lights, the girls, they they asked for them, but. Two years in a row, we had the we had the rain on the on the on their their game, which was unfortunate. So this year, when we heard about this event, we met with the teams, we met with the lacrosse team and and the seniors. And we opted to go this route because we could reach, with with the clinics, with the youth clinics on that day for the girls. We could reach more kids, and it was earlier in the day where we didn't have to also worry about the kids getting home at a certain hour, which we had in the past. So we're happy about this event and.
You won't need lights at this.
We won't need lights at this event, sorry, I didn't specify that.
When the players are done with their games, will they be involved with?
Yes, yes, so our our goal was really working with the girls, the the members of FAST. To tie in the varsity program to the students in grades three through eight. And really have that be an event where everybody comes together and we're excited, we have that in in motion. All initiated from the students who came to us and said, hey, can we try this? And we said, let's do it. Yeah, we're excited for it.
What do the numbers look like between girls and boys athletics in the high school?
Well, for example, we have some teams that don't have junior varsity teams. And they're like lacrosse, softball and 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 field hockey, which field hockey is starting to change. We're starting to get a reverse interest, a new, refoundish interest in field hockey. So it's one of it's one of the reasons why we're staying diligent diligent with this. In in our pursuit to really let people know what we offer and offering these ten sports clinics. For the students to take part in and maybe they'll try a new sport, and that's really, thank you for asking that question. That's really the initiative here, is to come try a new sport, you may just like it. And we'll hopefully have them exposed to all the ten, the ten different sports that we offer.
A quick question, and then you mentioned that seventh and eighth graders can try out depending on the sport for high school teams. Do we have a decent number of middle school students trying out, or is it just a few each season?
It varies by season, this year, I think we have eight students, eight, we have eight eighth grade boys on JV lacrosse. This year that that passed the testing.
Is that is that mostly based on interest, or the numbers were lower, a combination of the two, that they could take that many eighth graders?
It was a combination of the two, so we didn't have, we didn't have the large numbers there for for JV. But this helped, we didn't have to let, we didn't, we had enough spots to accommodate them, which made that process easier for them.
That's great.
And I guess just the one last question that I have, it's just on new, I mean, we have a lot of sports, but any new sports. Do you think we have capacity to add a new sport, or are we like at the right level of participation slots?
Well, I, as I mentioned in the in the our percentages, like we we've we've held them pretty consistently, you know. And we've always ranged between thirty and forty-five percent. So the only, the only area that we would, where I think we can increase, as I mentioned, the JV teams, right? But as far as enough, having enough students to add a new team, when we're adding the new teams, really they're they're merged teams. If you look at the girls' ice hockey and the and the potential for gymnastics, I believe it would have to be a merged program. Just it's it, it allows us to offer that for the students who would like it, I think it's a wonderful thing that that we do, and I applaud you for your support. Because the numbers can go up and down, right, our merged wrestling team, one year, we had thirteen Byram Hill students. This year, we were down to five, but that could turn around, we're also with the success of the program. And a lot of our student athletes did well with the program this year, that could turn around, so it really goes from year to year.
And it's student interest driven, like the gymnastics isn't because you thought of it, it's because kids came to.
The kids came to us and said, hey, can we try this?
No offense.
No, yeah, no, I get it.
The merged teams, Rob, is it, is the cost based on the the number of students we participate?
Yes.
Yes.
Participate, so if we only have two two kids participating, it's less than a year before year end.
That's kind of where I was going before, if you're rather the economics side.
Yeah, and it really does, it it's beneficial, because there is a, there is a significant savings when you have a merged program.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you very much.
Maybe Scott, thank you, Rob.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Turn it over, John, just to talk about the facilities operation.
First of all, John, yay for yesterday, job well done, getting that water pump fixed.
Working with Chemco, which is the company that oversees the operation and maintenance of our water system and our sewage system at the. At the high school and working with our staff, we were able to, Cody did, the owner of Semco. Was able to work with the health department real quick to get a pump approved, so we could replace and put a new pump in. They were able to secure a pump over in Connecticut, and between them and our staff, we were able to get it replaced and up and running.
You cannot replace your own home hot water heater as fast as we replaced that.
We, yeah.
That was impressive.
Everything really just came together that day, so.
Where did the pump come from?
It was in Danbury at a.
Oh, I thought it was.
Well, it was originally in Schenectady, we were gonna have to end up having somebody go to Schenectady. Again, Semco really, they really came through and they through talking with that distributor, they had a distributor knew that there were six of them over in Danbury. That a contractor was gonna be installing at the end of this week, so the contractor actually allowed us to take the two pumps. Because the other ones would be delivered back to them by Wednesday, so it was a, it was a big group effort, a lot of people really kind of just.
That's great.
Really helped out to get this.
Watched the dismay of the high school kids.
They were hoping for an extra day.
It was a grand day, it was a funny, it was a grand day. I know. They loved the day off.
Yeah. He's back, so everything worked out.
Thank you so much.
Yes, you're welcome, thank you.
And your team, Tino, did a good job with high schools. Yes.
Okay, so I guess we're gonna talk about the budget, the work proposal, and the slide up there. Um, I guess the bottom page. Salaries are pretty much the same, right, I mean, we have no increase on on that. Equipment costs, we have no increase, contractual, we have a small increase due to cost of taking care of some of. Maintenance equipment and things like that, and companies that we have in like Semco and people like that, the rising cost of water testing and and things. And then BOSI services.
Natural gas and electric isn't there?
Right, natural gas and electric's in that also, right, the cost, the rising cost of that and also the extra uses of energy for all the. Air conditioning and high back systems that we've put in over the last couple of years.
How many people are on your staff?
I'm sorry?
How many people are on your staff?
How many people are on our staff, I believe there's thirty-nine people on our staff.
And salaries include health insurance and everything?
Yes.
Well, it depends.
Oh, no, I don't know, this is just salaries, yeah, just salaries.
Just salaries, not benefits.
Benefit, no, this this budget line only includes salaries, not benefits. Employees who are full-time get salary and benefits, those that are part-time only get salary and benefits. And we have people who are part-time employees in in his department. Gotcha.
And that reduction in BOSI's is just, if you remember, whole presentation's packed, with new GAZB, we need to take all your expenses for copiers and rentals. And put in a new budget cost, that's that small reduction in BOSI's.
So you just don't like to allocate the benefits out to the individual budgets?
This is just a salary, the benefits are only in that one benefit go budget.
Got it.
Kelly, it looks like it's time for solar fields.
Yeah, I mean, it's rising, if you look at your home costs, electric and gas, it just, it keeps increasing, unfortunately.
So our next slide, we have, so that that's where I was a little confused with the salary thing, as we have, right, so we have.
Yeah. Yep, just to, we had some change in staff, we have some some staff members take other positions, we got some new staff and just a little reduction there. Based on the difference between the old staff and new staff.
Right, not a reduction of staff.
Yep, no reduction in staff, yeah, just just differences in salary.
We have an increase in the equipment line due to, we've put off as long as we can, a replacement of a maintenance plow vehicle that we need to. We put it off a long time, it's time to get a new vehicle, so that's why that line is up there.
Snow plow, you mean?
Yeah, the snow plow maintenance, it's for grounds, they go around, take care of all the maintenance around the projects. We have really, we have no increase in materials and supplies, we have no increase to maintenance projects, we kept that the same as last year. And we increased the the cap plan by a hundred thousand dollars, it has always been previously one point one million. We reduced it last year due to projects not costing as much, so we're putting the hundred thousand dollar into the projects we're gonna do this year. Some of the projects including. That we're gonna do this summer. Including Coleman Hill, we're gonna be replacing two high back units in the library. We're gonna be repainting the large gym, the walls, the ceiling, the structure of the large driven there. At Wampus, we're gonna be installing VCT tile and some new lighting in the hallways. We are going to be replacing demo and replacing the sidewalk at the bus drop-off. We're gonna be replacing and doing an operate, a partial operate on the P A system at Wampus. And HCC, we're going to be doing the same thing, we have a little bit of sidewalk work that we're gonna be doing over by special ed. We're gonna replace the sidewalk and all the ramps over there, put the railings in. We are also installing new lockers in the sixth grade, in the science wing, actually. Science wing, the lockers are in pretty bad shape and can ask for some new lockers, we're gonna replace all the lockers in the science, in the science wing. High school, we have a theater renovation for our stage lighting, that we're gonna be doing.
Stage, of actual stage, no?
About the stage.
Unless, that's a, a big project, that's a big project.
That's a big expensive project, needing to floor it on the stage. When you say that, you mean because of the way, looks or the way it operates? No, it's it's like, there's a lot of like nails coming up off the floor and wood, that just safety stuff maybe, just to look.
Got it.
Yeah, so we we did have some issues with it last year, and we did do some repairs to the areas that they were concerned with last year on the sides. There was a lot of just wear and tear from the years of dragging things across, so we made all the repairs that they were asking for. We actually did that this year, over the summer, so most of those repairs were taken care of. So also at the high school, we are going to be overhauling the chiller, which is what produces the air conditioning for our additions. We are going to be doing a high back renovations for the library. And I guess the big one is gonna be the lecture hall, so the lecture hall, we're, we are doing the renovation in-house. We've been working in conjunction with K S Q, which are the architects for the Learning Commons. So that the design that we're using, that you saw on your slides, are in conjunction with the lecture hall. So everything we're, everything we're gonna do in the lecture hall is conjunction with the Learning Commons, everything will match. The ceiling grid, the lighting, the theme will still be the same, and we're gonna be taking care of that in-house.
I have a quick question for you, if you don't mind, you had mentioned lighting at Wampus. Is that similar to what happened at Crittendon, the those same kinds of lights that are in the hallway, or it's different?
Yeah, in the in the hallways, yeah, the LED.
Because those are fantastic, I mean, they really brighten it.
We're gonna continue every year until we're basically, so HCC is pretty much done, even the classroom. So we're now moving into classroom, most of the hallways are done at the other schools, we're now gonna start doing all the classroom LED lighting.
That's great, it looks fantastic.
So we're gonna be doing that district-wide still, as we've been doing for the last couple of years. And then at transportation, we're going to be repaving two inches of asphalt in the front entrance of transportation. Because to the right side was taken care of when we did the renovation years ago, and we're gonna be repaving the entire back lot of transportation. And that's what our project's gonna be about.
That's all the summer.
That's quite a long.
It's just the summer.
It's always like that in the zone. That's great, any questions for John? Well, thank you so much, and.
Thank you guys for your.
Thank you.
Yeah, you first started, first beginning of the year.
Yeah, travel on fire.
You're in this position, yeah, it's really great, thank you.
Kelly, you wanna do your, your stand-in for Phil, or you want to be safe and quiet with them first?
Yeah, let me just do that, I'll do a real quick.
You wanna let them, why don't we let them?
Okay, come on.
Yeah, because they have to be back in five hours.
You guys have to go home.
Yeah, I'm tripping.
Unless you guys wanna listen.
No, go away, go go, thank you for coming, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Taking my tooth in the road.
Oh, yeah, I need some chocolate in the room. Drive safely, it's pretty wet out there.
Thanks.
Take care, but good night.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Sorry, did you want an audience here?
Yes.
Kelly, you were gonna make it a stay, you were like, yeah, yeah, thank you, stay.
It's two slides.
Uh huh, go ahead, okay, let's say, let's say.
Two slides, remember that. At least I don't have to follow attempt. So just in place of Phil, I can talk you a little, a little bit about the transportation budget. That increased three point six percent for salaries just based on contractual agreements with our bus drivers. We have a great program maintaining our bus drivers, keeping them, we're we're training them as well, so we're we're keeping our bus drivers, which is something a lot of districts have issues keeping. So we're doing a good job, Phil's doing a great job doing that. No increase for equipment, nine point seven percent increase for contractual and other, that's really associated with the insurance, vehicle insurance, workers' comp increases, as well as tolls. We've been paying a lot of tolls and tolls are increasing every year, anybody that can use those.
Can I ask a stupid question? No question is a stupid question, kids who are watching this. Uh, do we get on some kind of toll plan like I have, that I pay virtually nothing to over the.
Yeah, we have EZ Pass, and we have plans that that we can jump on, where we do it every day, that kind of looks interesting.
Yeah, we do that.
Can we get, can we get a grant to cover like transportation, since we're not helping?
Get a what?
Can you get a grant to cover?
A grant to cover transportation, that would be fantastic.
Cover tolls, certain tolls.
Unfortunately not.
Well, you can get a.
Yeah, we have an EZ, we have EZ Pass, and yeah, so we can get on a plan for the bridges.
Do a certain amount of money a month. Okay, but then it means anybody else.
And the buses aren't in, so equipment is not.
Can you put me on?
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's on a couple of slides, though. And then again, BOSI's that decrease again is associated with that that change in the code, GAZB eighty-five, eighty-seven. All the rental codes go into a new GAZB code for rentals, so that's that decrease, there's no reduction in that. No change in garage building, you know, that's that's our in-house repair, and our staff, we're keeping that consistent with last year. Small decrease in contractual transportation, this is a non-resident students that we transport on a daily basis. Reduction there based on the students. And then finally, vehicles, last year, we put a pause on purchasing vehicles and we're starting back up for next year. This is a purchase of two C-two conventional buses and one H D X transit bus with cargo storage, whatever that is. And one single van, so three buses in one van, yeah, I think it's, you know.
The understatement.
The flat buses and the and the nose buses.
Yes.
Yeah, so there's that increase there. Biggest bus, but, oh, and that's, that's it for transportation, any any questions on that?
Thanks, work.
Stay for that, I bet they would have liked that.
You know, ready?
Oh, I know, I'm not just six eighty. You're you're literally halfway home.
Gina, if you're cold, you can shut the window.
As always, cold.
I know she's freezing.
All right, so revenue, we talked about expenses these last three presentations, so we're gonna talk about the revenue side here. Here's a breakdown, you saw this before, of the of the three components, again, this is the expenditure side, program seventy-two point seven percent, capital fifteen point four and eleven point nine of administrative. So here's the revenue side, now, just a caveat to this, the state budget has not been completed yet, it was due April first, it's still kind of out in the air. I've heard rumors that it's supposed to be done by Thursday, the fourth, if that's the case, that'll be great. These numbers are specifically on what the governor presented on our budget, which was not great for schools. So these revenue numbers are just based on that, so I'll put that caveat on this conversation. But in terms of percentages, eighty-eight percent of our our revenue comes from our local taxpayers, our residents, again, only four percent from state aid. It was five percent last year because the budget was different in terms of the governor's proposal. But it's four percent this year, two percent from pilots, payment of taxes, four from fund balancing reserves, and then again, two percent is other revenue, such as sales tax, interest earnings. I could go through this whole presentation again, I did in January on the tax levy and how it's calculated, but I'll just give you a quick summary, save you some time. Again, our maximum allowable tax levy is three point three zero percent for next year, based on this format. Quick review of the pilots, you can see seventeen eighteen to eighteen nineteen, there was a large reduction in pilots, that's. Quick review of the pilots, um you can see uh seventeen eighteen to eighteen nineteen, there was a large reduction in pilots, that's when the Swiss repilot came off, came back into the tax rule. Um, going forward, in terms of our pilots have been pretty consistent, it looks like they're they're flattening out uh kinda going forward, so we shouldn't see that big dip which we saw seventeen eighteen eighteen nineteen in terms of our pilots. We have two pilot agreements remaining, I B M and Eagle Burman, so. Last year, we thought our the I B M pilot would be a significant decrease because they were still negotiating the terms, but it didn't uh end up being that, it was pretty much flat, and it's actually increased in the next two years and then decreasing in the next three, not significantly though, thank you, thankfully. Debt service, um again, we refinanced our bonds in in nineteen twenty, uh and we saw some savings going forward. Twenty-six twenty-seven, we'll have no debt service, so twenty-five twenty-six will be our last payment for our debt service remaining, um and then twenty-six twenty-seven will be debt free, have the house paid off. Uh, just as a review of fund balance, uh you hear this term a lot, fund balance, there's really three kinds of fund balance, the most you hear talked about is restricted fund balance, which is reserves. But there's also assigned fund balances, which what we carry over on a budget every year, year to year, there's unassigned fund balance balance, which a district is allowed to have up to four percent of their next year budget in a in account, unreserved, uh unassigned. Not tied to anything, but the mostly what we talk about is a restricted fund balance, which is reserves. Just wanna quickly go over those reserves, so you have a knowledge of that, uh just going for us forward, district has seven reserves. The first reserve, the test.
Are there reserves that are permissible that we don't have?
Yes, yes, um offhand, I can't think of one, but yes, there's about fifteen reserves that district can have, some of them we can't have, some of them, some of the reserves are associated with selling property, you can have a reserve.
Right.
There's a tax reduction reserve, which I think is also a sale property you can put aside, um some districts have their own insurance, you can do an insurance reserve that way, you have your own private insurance, um but. There's probably ten as well, we can, yeah, exactly, that you can have, uh we have, we currently have seven, um always, we can always take a look at other reserves if we, going forward if we need them, yeah, but.
Like we needed the one at the bus garage for the.
Property loss, very good.
Yeah.
Uh, so this is the first reserve, tax search reserve, search area reserve, if if a company uh feels they're being over assessed, uh they make a grievance, try to get a reduction in their assessment. Now, they've already paid their tax bill, so if they get any production assessment, assessment, district has to refund them the amount, that's why you have a tax search area reserve.
Not just a company, individuals also.
Well, that's a, that's not a reserve, that's a, that's a scar, that's a small claims assessment of you.
Oh, see, I just learned something.
Yeah, difference, yeah.
Wow.
Yep, that's not a reserve actually, so, we budget for that on a yearly basis. Um, so that's four point eight million dollars in the tax search area reserve, the insurance reserve, um not health insurance, regular insurance, uh it's a, it's for anything that's not covered, uninsured uh losses, um you know. Various things that happen and and you don't have coverage for that or doesn't cover it up to the amount that you need, district has seven hundred twenty thousand dollars in that reserve. Property loss, the one Jen was talking about, this goes back to sixteen seventeen, uh the district maintained insurance for flood over at the bus garage. And the premium kept increasing and increasing, so we created the reserve because if there was an incident, the max the district could be refunded was six hundred thousand dollars, so the district created that reserve at six hundred thousand dollars to save the premium on a year-to-year basis.
And made fifty-three thousand one hundred sixty-nine dollars.
Yes, based on interest every year, yep.
Instead of losing thirty thousand.
Hi, there you go, it was a great decision.
You know, in in um, going back to the O P A, and the fact that you can't reserve for post-retirement healthcare in New York than you can in many states, and. There's a lot, you know, there's a lobbying exercise there to try to, you know, create the reserve, but theoretically, you don't need a new reserve, you just need different language uh legislated around the insurance reserve to include.
Absolutely.
Right, claims that you have covered done but may not be adequate.
A hundred percent, yeah, that that's that's a way, we need.
That's a, that's a much more subtle way to try to get a change that would be s- exceptional for schools.
Wow.
And that's exactly what, that's a great, great move there, that's exactly what they did with the retirement contribution, it was a retirement contribution.
Oh, is that right?
This reserve, yeah, this reserve right here was just based on employment retirement system, so anybody that's not a teacher, not a supervisor, not administrator, that was the only reserve you could have, and you could have nothing for T R S. Two years ago, they traded, created this sub fund for T R S, so all these districts had large amounts in their N R S, they they made this T R S, so they kinda shifted it.
Uh, yeah.
But that was, that was a way, cause there was a fight and advocacy every year, T R S rates kept increasing, the majority of your staff salary is T R S.
Right. Right.
Um, so that was the way they did it, which would be similar to your way of doing it uh for health insurance in other ways, so that could be an avenue to go, definitely, um, so that's a great point, yes sir.
The bus garage is, is it in a flood zone?
It is in a flood zone, yes, national flood zone, yes, it is.
Really? That's from the Wampus Brook or?
Mm-hmm, yep, yep, so that's why we had that coverage, yeah.
Isn't odd.
And we have one problem with the password, it kinda seeps up through the concrete.
I we. A little bit, we haven't had many issues over, that's good, John has been pushing off the the pavement of of transportation for a long time, um and we're we're at a point where we just need to address it, yeah, so. We've been really lucky with flooding over there, that's right, that's.
We got some pump setup, I guess, or?
Yeah, we got, we have everything over there, yep, trying to pump it out, so, but we got, we've been very lucky, very lucky.
Know that, yeah. Interesting, okay, thank you.
Sure. Uh, okay, and uh, employed benefits accrued liability reserve, we have five hundred and fifty-four thousand, this is associated with the actual people, um every dollar is associated in this reserve to an actual person. Based on contractual agreements, past contractual agreements for payment of unused sick and vacation days upon retirement, so these numbers are exact um for people uh that are currently here. Unemployment insurance reserve, again, if we have a, an issue where uh we have to make reductions, uh this reserve you can use to mitigate those costs, we haven't, fortunately, haven't done that um in a lot, many years, uh but we still have a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in in that reserve as well. And then finally, capital reserve, um one we've discussed uh for this uh this new upcoming project, uh it was established in sixteen seventeen. Um, again, needs to be voter approved, uh to establish and voter approved to to uh utilize the funds, which we're doing for the year.
Kelly, when does that expire?
Uh, two more years, two more years, so, so twenty-six, yeah, sixteen, so twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-seven, the twenty-seventh is coming, right.
Right. When's the first?
Twenty-six, twenty-seven. So again, the balance, uh nineteen point nine million dollars, you know, remembering the the large balance of that is in our capital reserve, and that number's been pretty consistent over the last three to five years, it's been between eighteen and twenty, so we've kinda been consistent with the reserves, fortunately we have. And we haven't utilized them that much, um you may remember this presentation uh on the twenty-two twenty-three budget back in November, where we talked about balancing the budget. We talked about any interest we earned in terms of the reserves, we allocated to the capital reserves to get us to that eight million dollar amount for uh the project. And then balancing the budget, we need to use eight hundred and five thousand dollars or to balance the budget last year, excuse me. Okay, apportionment of taxes, is my favorite part. A lot of questions about the equalization rate, okay, so thank you, I'm running out, running out of steam. Uh, so. If a, if a town was fully assessed on a yearly basis, a hundred percent fully assessed, there'd be no need for an equalization rate. It's virtually impossible to have every town be assessed on a yearly basis, so the state prepares an equalization rate, okay, comes from the local assessors, they send up the information, the state. Gathers that information on sales, property values, it comes up with an equalization rate for each town, this changes on a yearly basis, so North Castle for for this year is one point six five percent, okay? So if you have a, follow me on the math, if you have a total market value of a million dollars on the bottom here, your equalization rate is one point six five percent, your total assessed value is sixteen thousand five hundred dollars, okay? And that's what you're taxed on, on a yearly basis, that's how the equalization rate changes, so whatever that number increased, again, North Castle one point six five. Your market value may change one way or the other, your assessed value will change based on that change of the equalization rate, so they're saying, your assessed value is one point six five five percent of your market value, okay? That's why you'll see rates, you'll see, North Castle will be seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and Mount Pleasant will be one thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars and, you know, it'll be eighty-four dollars for Bedford, cause it's based on those equalization rates, okay? I'll spend a little further. Here, here's again, some more calculations in order to do the apportionment of taxes. Really, something I wanna stress tonight is just the change in in full value on a yearly basis from last year to this year. Last year, this number was six point one million dollars, now this is the total, if you take every property that's associated with bar and mill school district, and you wanted to buy though, every one, it cost you seven billion dollars. Last year, it would have cost you six point one billion dollars, okay, that's almost a billion dollar increase in full value on a yearly basis, huge.
Because you're number one.
Huge.
You're number one, you go up one bill, one billion.
It's a great way of thinking.
That's what it was, it was one billion.
Well, you're number one, that's amazing.
And and this kind of, that it's, it's huge, huge, and the majority of it is associated.
That's outrageous. Have you ever seen that before?
A billion dollars, no, that's crazy, that is a crazy number, and and the highest, the majority of our property is North Castle, right?
That's crazy.
And you look at this increase, last year it was seven hundred and twenty million, it was eight hundred and ninety-seven for this year, one point six billion dollars for a down in two years. If you look back to seventeen eighteen, it was a little over four point one billion, or the six point one billion, that's two billion dollars.
No one else jumped like that, that's strange.
Huge number, are we sure, are we sure they didn't make a mistake?
And I say that only half joking, because it wouldn't be the first.
That would be scary, no, I'm pretty sure they did, it's crazy.
Never trust anyone.
That's, you know.
That is a huge.
It's happened.
Right, before, it's not much of a.
So, no, no, not not to the extent, look, if you look back at these numbers here, look at the chart, it's never been this this much, it's huge, huge.
No.
Yeah. Crazy.
But it kind of falls suit with the other district of the the other towns, towns, I mean, your forty-four properties, your forty-one properties in Bedford, but if you look, the shift, obviously it's not the billions. You know, you have a shift here over eight, nine, nine million or so, uh and then, you know, a huge shift last year.
Nine million is different than one billion.
It's forty-four properties, this, this is thirty-seven hundred properties, and you're talking forty-four properties, okay, so it's a huge difference in amount of properties.
Forty-four.
And it's not the same prices on that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, these are billions, you're talking millions on North Castle, you're talking millions on Newcastle and Mount Pleasant, and a difference. I mean, it's forty-four properties, Newcastle forty-one for Bedford, Mount Pleasant. Mount Pleasant has been pretty consistent, if you look at Mount Pleasant, we've always known about this, they don't really increase or decrease their assessed value on a yearly basis, but.
Yeah.
These last two years, okay, you've seen a shift too, and it's been pretty consistent all four times, you really, you see a jump in terms of that, huge jump in Bedford from from two or three.
Yeah.
Kelly, are you talking about the assessed value that's jumped up, is that what you mean?
Market value, market value.
Market value.
Full value, this is the full value.
So something that cost one dollar last year costs.
Went up from.
Went up that much?
I mean, it's tough to think about, but but I think when we talk in finance.
Enter from positive all of the homes.
I think when we talked in finance advisory, there was eight hundred thousand dollar market value now, so twenty-three, twenty-four, and it went up to about nine twenty-ish in twenty-four, twenty-five, so that that's the amount of increase you're talking about.
So, aren't, you're saying bar and mill is very much in the amount?
Yes, yeah, specifically in North Castle, for sure, you can see by the, by the changes in assessed value on a yearly basis. Um, and again, that, those changes in assessed value and and full value affect the shift of the tax level, the share of the tax level. The more market value assessed value increases, the more the share of the tax level gets shifted, you know, uh, we've seen that in the last couple of years with Mount Pleasant. Mount Pleasant's been pretty consistent in their assessed values, it will, you know, last two, three years might increase, whereas North Castle, it it's hard in this graph because this is such a huge number, these don't look like big shifts.
Right.
But they are, I mean, you're you're talking from four to four point five, so, so North Castle went down these years, whereas Mount Pleasant kinda leveled off. So that shift of the tax level went from North Castle to Mount Pleasant, okay?
It's all made that jump in the last two years.
It's coming, yes, I mean. Westchester as a whole, I I think, would say, the the full values have increased, the the market value of full values increased in the last couple of years based on, you know, right after COVID, these things have just been, been going quickly.
I mean, Mount Pleasant's the outlier in terms of the lack of increase compared to the other.
Yes, Mount Pleasant, in my opinion, has been very conservative in their assessed values, having full values, it hasn't, hasn't shifted consistently.
But if you look at them on a ten-year stretch, it's not that their percentages are so much different than North Castle.
Um.
But do we also have more um new, new homes on the market, cause we had all that new construction.
Potentially, yep, that could be potentially, yeah, more homes, more more value, more assessed value on the market, whereas Mount Pleasant.
A lot of new construction is happening, it's happening.
Yeah, whereas Mount Pleasant might not have had those, and the Bedford, New Castles, pretty set properties on a yearly basis.
Right.
So again, that shift really causes that that change in the share of the tax level, here's just a quick review of where we've been, uh in terms of the tax level on a yearly basis, the tax level formula started in twelve thirteen. Uh, we've been consistently lower than the uh the maximum allowable, uh and you see how how it really changes on a yearly basis based on the formula, you know, you look at sixteen seventy, where it was point four three percent. And then eighteen nineteen, it was up to four point five uh as a max as well, um these last, last year, we we maintained the uh the maximum allowable at one point nine three percent, uh and and we're proposing to do that as well this year. For in terms of the tax level, but as a whole, as a whole, we've uh we've taxed four point five million dollars less than the maximum allowable tax level since the inception of the formula. So these total revenues, um I'm gonna knock on wood, I hope we're, I hope we're gonna change um before we finalize the budget. This is based on the governor's budget, which uh the state budget is, again, was supposed to be approved yesterday, um and has been extended uh with the negotiations, so these numbers are based on her proposed budget. Um, something that kinda stands out is the state aid, you see that large reduction, uh she did propose a a reduction in foundation aid, and that was about a four hundred and thirty thousand dollar decrease for us. So really, you should, hopefully, uh in the next, next meeting, see these two numbers change here, the state aid and the amount of a found, uh fund balance we're gonna need to to kick in in order to balance the budget for next year. But as of right now, these are the numbers, uh ticket tax levy at three point three uh zero percent, uh our pilots, uh it's not really going up eleven percent. Uh, when we budgeted the pilot last year, again, the the negotiations weren't done with the pilot. We assumed there would be a large reduction, I B M's new pilot deal, but actually it wasn't, it was consistent and a little bit of an increase, so good news, so it's not really an increase of two hundred and fifty-four thousand, it's a difference from what we budgeted, actual and what we're budgeting, okay? Uh, and then increase for other revenue, uh so we have increased that number for sales tax, uh as well as interest, um we've consistently made more in interest in the last three years than we budgeted, so I've increased that slightly. Um, just to account for that, kind of sales tax has been uh continually increasing on a yearly basis as well.
And the interest, I guess, compared to the interest rate now, the expectation still is that the Fed's gonna reduce rates a few times this year, who knows if that'll happen or not, if it happens, probably not until at least the middle of the year, but I don't know how much leeway we have.
Yeah. Yeah, but very conservative, yeah, I mean, I I would anticipate our interest earning being close to one point five million dollars, so I've increased it six, about half, about half, um so.
Okay.
Uh, but obviously, you wanna be conservative with your revenues, cause if you don't have it, yeah, there's no way to find it, um so I'm very conservative with the revenues there. And again, state aid, that decrease, um hopefully will be pretty consistent to what we had last year, I would anticipate hopefully a little more, um if they restate foundation aid and safe harmless. Um, and then our fund balance should, reserve should be similar to what it's been uh for twenty-three, twenty-four, once that adjustment is made, the state aid and the budget's finally passed by the uh by legislators. So in terms of the uh estimated tax rates for next year, uh an increase of five percent for North Castle, uh up one point nine three percent for Newcastle, Bedford a decrease of two point oh seven. And Mount Pleasant decrease of four point three percent, and again, these are solely due to those changes in market assessed value on a yearly basis. Just to review of the last uh nine, ten years, um you can see uh a good example, take a look at Mount Pleasant in these last, from twenty, uh I'm sorry, from nineteen to twenty-one, you saw where their their assessed value kinda leveled out. Um, and North Castle was kinda decreasing, you saw, you can see the, the shift was really from Newca- North Castle, excuse me, to Mount Pleasant. And the changes in Bedford and Newcastle on a yearly basis, you can see it's really uh kinda all over the place depending on the yearly, um you can see decreases in twenty-two, twenty-three, you know, large increase for Bedford. It kinda washed out in twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty, last year, where they had a decrease of eight point three, and the following year, they had an increase of eight point three, so again, those properties being less than one percent of our properties can really change significantly on a year-to-year basis. But if you can take a look at at North Castle, you know, they've had lower uh increases on on a year-to-year basis, uh the last couple, couple, three years, that shift has really came, come from Mount Pleasant. The uh, you know, in tw- nineteen twenty through twenty-one, twenty-two, Mount Pleasant has been pretty high in terms of their share, and that's kinda shifted back the other way, whereas Mount Pleasant has been decreasing in the last two years, and North Castle has been increasing their share of the assessed value. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and and it makes sense because there are four different towns that are involved here.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, a lot of districts don't have this mentality, yeah.
They don't have that, and prior to us recently selling a home, we had two homes, both in Rockland County, and none of this mattered, like, none of this would even happen because it was only that town that was beating that school district.
Right. Yep.
And I never saw a reduction in my taxes on either one of those houses, and all the time. Like, there was never a fluctuation because of an equalization rate.
That's strange.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I think the thing to remind the community, cause I think some of these numbers, this is not ideally what you'd wanna see, when you're looking at year-to-year changes in tax rates, but the only thing that we have control over is the overall tax levy. And then the rest is a calculation that's provided to us by all these equalizations, so, so it's really that bottom line that we ultimately have control over with our budget.
Right. Ideally, we, it'd be great if we could change it and just kinda spread it out among the towns, right, equally, but unfortunately, that's 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 based on the on the formula, you know, you have to do it based on the assessed value changes on a year-to-year basis. And this fits in great with Jen's comment, our true tax rate, um. And this fits in great with Jen's comment, our true tax rate, um, this is a way to measure your your home, your property with other districts, and pick it up and put it down in another district. And we've been consistently, um, one of the one of the better schools in Westchester County in terms of our true tax rate. Uh, fortunately, eighteen schools didn't fill out this data, and this is last year's information, I should have next year's by the next meeting, but, uh, you know, we we finished thirty six, um, excuse me, twenty ninth out of thirty six school districts, and this is an area where you want to be towards the bottom in terms of the tax rate, so.
Not to either.
Of course, of course, um, so yeah, we're down here towards the bottom here, uh, Mount, uh, Byron Mills at fifteen point six nine, uh, so, a a great something to be proud of here in terms of our true tax rate, just the the value of our our taxes. And then, um, just to review the proposition two, you want me to do it?
Sure, go ahead, Kelly.
Sure.
This is really just for the edification of the public, so you can fly through this, the board has seen this exact presentation nineteen times.
So. Yes.
Ready, I'm giving you two minutes, Kelly, just go. Three phases to the project, next.
These are, the first one, learning commons, take a look at Coman Hill, uh, our B H E F Foundation, uh, has given us a tremendous amount of funds to to fund Coman Hill, our Wampus Library, and uh H C C in nineteen twenty, uh, look amazing.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty nineteen.
What did I say, nineteen twenty?
I was in around in nineteen twenty.
Nineteen twenty, yes, do you know nineteen twenty?
Nineteen twenty.
Oh, twenty nineteen.
What did I say?
That's how we talk in school talk, no, you said it right, nineteen twenty, it's like the nineteen twenty school year.
Oh, nineteen twenty, okay. Nineteen slash twenty. It was way before that, okay.
Yeah.
So the current uh conditions at the library lecture hall, this is the entrance to the library, our our current library, um, our sleep, uh, this is our beautiful wood paneling to the lecture hall. Uh, and a look inside the lecture hall as well. Uh, we're anticipating a completion of the learning commons in March two thousand twenty five, hopefully, hopefully before. Uh, this is our current layout, I'm sorry, this is the new look, this is the lecture hall, the new uh pictures and renderings for the lecture hall. The hallway coming into the library. The hallway down the hall shows the the beautiful uh glass uh rooms, meeting rooms for our students. Walking into the library, this is the look you'll see. Behind the library desks and kiosks, you have this. Walking around the library, this is the first thing you'll see with a beautiful background, logo. This is the large instruction uh area room, uh, that will be added.
Will be demountable wall.
Demountable wall, yes, I assume you can split that in two classrooms. And then, uh.
Jen's favorite.
Jen, yeah, this is the outdoor uh area, which students will be able to, um, have some time together and relax.
But not scary.
Let's go. But not scary. Around the screen, that's why.
And then second phase is.
No animals in, no kids out.
Second phase is turf field, hopefully, uh, completed by September of two thousand twenty five, this is our current turf field. This uh will be right next to it, the new one. This is a drawing of what it'll look like, after that, we'll complete our field and court lighting by September of two thousand twenty seven. Here's a rendering of what that'll look like, um, the various meetings we've had, the board had a ver- virtual walkthrough tonight. Uh, the faculty will have one tomorrow, and then on the eleventh, B H E F will have an event as well, um, just to take a look at the new renders.
And then the P T S A after that, another B H E F event, and then a community event on May fourteenth.
Yep, yep, thank you. This will be the proposition, uh, that we will see on the ballot, proposition two, yes or no? Um, and then just a little bit of capital reserve for how it was funded. The timeline of the project. Uh, the cost and anticipated completion. And that's it for the project, and then the tax levy increase, three point three percent, a budget to budget three seven five, and a total budget of one hundred and three point four nine. So all this information will be on the website for further review. Uh, we have on the sixteenth, we do our final budget, proposed budget presentation, hopefully, we'll have our numbers by then from the state, excuse me. Adoption on May, April thirtieth, uh, our review of the final proposed budget on the seventh, and then the vote will be May twenty first, from eight thirty to nine, uh, H C C.
Thank you, Kelly, nice job.
Good overview.
I think they all choked up from those reserves.
Okay. Moving on to staff reports.
Yes.
Jen, you got anything else?
Uh, no, he has mine, I think you have mine.
I got it.
Somebody always has that.
Yep. We're switching here. Let me get you on.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you.
That works, it's a lens.
All right. The time's had by all, we're in April already, can't be believed. And yesterday, when we lost the water pressure in the pipe in the high school, and then we were intermittently losing the internet, I thought it was all a bad April Fool's Day joke. No, it was reality. Um, all right, I'm gonna go through these, Kelly did them already.
Can we do it again?
Beautiful, 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 so nice student highlights. Hold on, let me make sure it's the first one, yes. All right, our mock trial team heads to Westchester, and they are Westchester County champions, triumphed in the finals. Take a look at the kids' names in yellow, Jake, Adriana, Aaron, Ashley, Ashley, Andrew Levy, and Jesse. Um, started as witnesses, three witnesses, and we also had the um attorneys, the three attorneys. And they, following spring break, will progress to regional championships, congratulations, awesome, very exciting. I will say the judge, um, who judged them is a real judge, and the nine judicial district who lives in our town and was floored. She said that they're better than many of the attorneys who show up in this town. Yeah, I think I told him, she actually commented she's never seen such professionalism and uh just.
Judge James.
Yeah, she asked what um what town we were, and then she was just excited about it afterward, but she had given the compliment before she asked what town. Real dedication.
Yeah, she didn't know what town they were.
By the students, yeah, real dedication by the students and by the coach, uh, you know, Martin Gilbert is coaching and Matt Allen is supporting them.
There's a lot of preparation, and then there's a lot of thinking on your feet, it's interesting.
Thinking on your feet, right.
Yeah.
Uh, we had five H C C students advance to the tri-state geography bee.
Wow.
Pretty awesome, right? So, um, they helped the school wide be, and these are the students who achieved the top twenty five scores, and then it came down to five successful competitors. Who are going to advance to the tri-state athlete, which is great, very cool, congratulations. And science research at WESF, um, you'll probably see a press release about this today or tomorrow. Uh, but we had, remember that there were twenty seven seniors who were competing, um, and three juniors with over seven hundred students. Zach Pero claimed the grand prize, spot among twenty overall scoring projects, and the opportunity to compete at Regeneron, uh, in the H C C. Yeah, unbelievable. And then we had, you know, not because that's not enough, we had twenty two students receive awards. Um, first place going to Grace and Karaoke, and second place. We had a bunch, uh, we have third place, fourth place, and special awards to a ton of our students, and we are so proud of them and how hard they work. It's amazing. I think it's as close as, well, I don't know, maybe I can't really say that, because I feel like if you go into a bunch of other classes, it's like that too. But it's like a college atmosphere when you go in there. And I would say there was a time when science research was the only one that was like that, and that is not the case at all anymore. Right, there are so many courses where you go in and you see kids who are working at the capacity of the college level, yeah. And AP aside, I think that does need to weigh in. Um, here more, hit, look, take a look at that room on the right hand side, it's awesome, that's great.
That's Western.
It's just amazing. And Charlotte wins the Neil Ginsburg Award for Human Rights, this is uh just absolutely amazing, and it's a most prestigious honor. Um, advancing human rights causes, and she is, um, not from the Holocaust and Human Rights Education Center. Congratulations, Charlotte. And then last but not least, a solar eclipse party, we weren't really sure how we felt about party, but it's like a party. We're having food trucks, it is taking place at the high school, thank you so much to Dennis Covert and the Astronomy Club who have put that all together, they are having trivia, cahoot games, arts and crafts on the patio, um, a live stream in the theater, we have enough glasses for everyone and their grandparents. Um, we invite you, let us dismiss our students first, although I don't think anybody's leaving. Um, and then if anybody wants to come on the campus from the community, we invite you to come, we will give you glasses, and you can participate in the festivities. We are sending notices, have already sent notices home to parents, if anybody wants to pull their kids early, um, their.
It's the same, the little ones aren't done yet.
There are certain times that you can pull them up to two o'clock, I think, or something like that, so it's not interfering with just regular dismissals. Um, anyone is welcome, other than that, our athletics will be postponed in the afternoon, the section has moved all of the games to later in the afternoon. Um, so if anybody wants to do that, but we are running a regular schedule, understanding that there are kids who go to activities after school, there are parents who work. The entire world, even though this only happens once every four hundred years, the entire world is not maybe taking off for this event. And there are parents who will want their kids to go to certain activities in the afternoon. So we are running our regular schedule and are really open to uh families who want to do this experience. A few families said they're taking their kids out of school to go upstate, to be closer to the viewing and and a better viewing site, and I applaud that and think it's great, and we we respect what any family wants to do in this situation, and we will provide glasses.
Let me add that there's also a huge learning component that's going along with this.
Yes.
So Dennis, who works with our science ambassadors, has prepared lessons, and the high school students are going down to Coman Hill, I think on Thursday, and doing lessons with second grade students.
Yeah.
We also have our middle school, eighth grade students going over to Wampus tomorrow.
So cute.
Doing lessons for the students on what the eclipse is, and what it's gonna look like, and talking about safety when you're wearing your glasses, make sure, you know, you're wearing your your official glasses when looking at the sun. So there's a lot of activities going on as well.
So you said that's, uh, like the activities and sports were postponed till after four o'clock, is it gonna be safe for them, for them to be playing outside?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it, well, it should be, like.
Yeah.
Over.
Over.
Close-ish, I mean, it peaks around th- this area around three thirty six, starts at two eleven.
And it's it's interesting, because we just did, like, somebody had a question today on the highway, it says, arrive early and stay late.
Yeah.
Like, as if it's dangerous to drive, it's it's only that they don't want people to be looking up while they're driving and causing mayhem, right? So like, this is going to alleviate any traffic issues and safety issues, um, but it is not unsafe to walk outside, like, I feel.
Yes.
There are people who believe that, right, they're like, I don't know, they're telling me.
It's true.
The highway signs is.
They're a little misleading.
Yes.
Right. Yeah.
Right.
And I know that they're doing, um, a lot, first of all, I I know that we gave credit to the astronomy club, and Deb Kay has really been supporting the astronomy club, and put this really great graphic together. Um, but the person who's been behind this for weeks and weeks and weeks has been Tim, um, trying to coordinate what's happening between buildings and and that this actually needed to be an event, right? So.
Thank you, Tim, that's awesome.
Thanks to the principals, who are always troopers and working through the logistics, I just tell them what they have to work on, and they work on it, and they know more than I do, so they're really managing.
Great. Yeah. Yeah.
It's gonna be very special.
You know, Chris Walsh with managing the traffic that will be here at pickup.
And Peggy managing, like, they're getting all the kids lined up by bus, and they're gonna be watching, um, a video in the afternoon, so that kids who are going out to buses are gonna be together, and they're gonna be exiting the front, so we're we're just trying to, you know, not have all of this mayhem outside.
Manage the logistics.
Manage the logistics, it's all good. And that's it, and so any board members who are around, if you would like to grab glasses today and will come to that event, we.
No, I just bought mine too.
Did you? Why would you do that?
Because it said that notice said for students and staffs.
Yeah.
We want to save the students.
What does it said for students and staffs?
It did, it came out today, but we want to save it for the kids, we want to make sure.
It says, dear community members.
But it says glasses will be provided for students and staffs.
Thank you, it's wonderful, right?
Tim will have to summon us after.
It's all good.
We have.
It was worth it.
So community can go, but you're not getting glasses, that's what it looked like, right? Okay, yeah, all of our efforts. Yes, thank you, all right, Tim.
Sure, thanks. Um, I want to give an overview of current curricula that is that are under.
I love.
Bit of a notated, uh, Shanty was.
Yes, it's been a long time.
Yes.
That looks like a. Okay.
Oh, David, yes.
Right.
David, no David.
No Dave.
Right, so this is, um, from Wampus students who do, um, an art project where they're doing scream, the the famous scream, uh, pictures.
Ah. Oh, that's a happy scream.
Right, so, um, the students do their own of themselves, and they just crack me up, so you'll be seeing this for a while, my presentations, I have many of them, um, that I took pictures of, so. They say this, you know, sometimes students doing painting and stuff at the elementary, they don't really like to, kids love doing this, it's one of their most favorite.
Uh, what grade is this?
Um, I don't remember, it's at Wampus, it's it's Wampus, yeah, so it's third, fourth, and fifth, I don't remember which grade, might be fourth grade, I'm not sure.
Oh, it is?
Wampus?
So anyway, I want to give you an update on curriculum, um, programs that are under review, and let me first mention this, that you know, every every occasion occasionally I have a review cycle, I have a four-phase review cycle that I've showed you in the past. We're constantly looking at our curriculum and doing continuous improvement, and there are times we want to take a particular curriculum and evaluate it and possibly adopt a new program. So when we do adopt programs, at times, before we make the final decision, we want to pilot these programs or several programs before we make the decision and the recommendation to the board. So I want to talk about those that are currently under review. To remind our community, it is the Board of Education that officially adopts curriculum or curriculum programs. So we recommend those programs to the Board of Education. So there are some that we have not yet recommended, but we're currently piloting them in the classroom, so I want to talk about that process, and then talk about the few programs that are currently under review. So why do we pilot curricular programs? Um, there's some real benefit to it, it's something that I started doing several years back, because you can have vendors come in, you can vet programs, you can look at materials, have vendors come in and present them to you. And a lot of times, you can be swayed by a sales representative. Um, the real way to know how it feels is by actually taking it and doing it in the classroom with real kids. And so we can look at how feasible does this curriculum play out, what are some of the advantages to it, where are there some areas where we need to think about? Possible training to do with teachers before full implementation, so there are a lot of benefits, um, to implementing a a a program first unofficially by trying it out in a few classrooms. Um, I have a process by how we do that, um, a three-phase process, we first have to design it, so we identify the purpose of the program. Who is going, what are the participants, how many teachers, on what grade levels, and then develop the criteria upon which we would evaluate the curriculum. And then purchase materials and provide training, it's always important to provide that training in advance, so that we're implementing the curriculum the way it's supposed to be, so we get a real sense of how we're, it's supposed to be implemented. Then we implement it, and it's important during implementation that we're providing support along the way, we have access to con- consultants that can advise us. We meet regularly throughout the process so that we can get feedback and make any adjustments along the way. And then at the end of the pilot process, we evaluate it using the criteria we established at the beginning. And then we determine next steps based on that, the next steps could be, yes, this is really working, let's recommend it to the board. It could be, no, this program isn't for us, let's try something different, or it could be expanding the pilot, so there's different options along the way. Sometimes we're looking at more than just one curriculum at a time, we might pilot, um, implement two or three at a given time, and we've done that in the past. That's a lot to manage, um, I don't, that's not ideal, but sometimes we have done two programs, we've done that in math several times. So I want to go through just a few of the programs that we're currently, um, looking at. One is with our kindergarten class, um, I won't go through all the details of the process, certainly if you have any questions about process. It usually starts with vetting various programs, and then making some decisions, meeting with sales reps, and then deciding on what to pilot and a timeline around that pilot. So there's a lot of in the process of all of that. So phonemic awareness, um, came up last year during our literacy study, the need for a phonemic awareness program. I include that slide on the bottom to show you the importance of phonemic awareness, it's in the literature, phonemic awareness is around the sound that words make. And then that is directly connected to phonics. Phonics is when you go from the sound of a word or the parts of a word to the printed text. And the research shows that students, um, learn to decode better when you make that direct connection between the sound of a word and its printed text, and the sound that each of the parts of the letters make. So for example, the word cat, so you 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 talk to kids about cat, and that's the full word cat, and then you break it down into its phonemes, which is cat, cat. And then you, that's part of the speech part, and that's part of phonemic and phonemic awareness. And then you make that connection to the printed text of, the C represents the K, the A represents ah, and the T represents t, and that word is cat. And then there's a whole phonics program then that leads that into the orthographic mapping into the brain and how kids learn to read. So the phon- we. So the phon- we realized that our students over the past few years have really been struggling with the articulation of words and the, the sounds. And we do have students coming from multiple kindergartens with different programs. We also think that our phones are having some impact on student's speech and not having as much, um, oral language proficiency than in the past. Um, the phonemic awareness program takes eight minutes per day up to implement it, so it's a very short piece. Um, but gets students to really work on the actual speech. So we're leveling the playing field with other kids having that. And then that directly connects to our phonics program, which is foundations. So we're currently piloting that now, we'll do in a, we're, we're pre-piloting this, this, uh, spring, we'll fully pilot it next year. And then I imagine coming to you if we decide to keep it with a recommendation the year after.
Can I ask two quick questions?
Yeah, sure.
Sorry, you knew I was gonna talk, right?
Yeah, that's fun, this is fun stuff, so I love it.
The first is, um, are all of the, when you're pre-piloting, is this across all kindergarten classes or you've chosen a few to sort of start?
So with this particular, uh, program, the teachers, when, at the pre-pilot, all the teachers are experimenting with it now because Hegarty is, Hegarty is the name of the curriculum. Um, Hegarty requires certain, um, hand movements, there's some visual movements to it. And so the teachers wanted to get comfortable with that, it's new to them. So they're all experimenting with it now and doing it at various degrees. I believe all teachers are doing it to some degree, some maybe more than others. But they all wanted to get comfortable with it.
And this-
Then we're all gonna implement it in September.
And this is in addition to all the other pieces that we've discussed with the literacy programs?
It's in addition. Exactly right, so this is an added piece to connect it directly to the foundations program.
And this is something that we've been working with Hegarty, um, Hegarty for what, two years or years?
Yeah, over a year, yeah, yeah, so we've been working with the company, we've been experimenting with this a little bit. Two years ago, we started using it as a tier-two intervention. So it became a tier-two intervention, uh, two years ago. So at Coman Hill with kindergarten.
And now this is being piloted for everybody, for the, for all of the students.
Yes, for all, all tier-two instruction, for those students who were identified as needing phonemic awareness.
Tier two, okay.
Where in our, um, screening data showed that they needed that. And we were seeing it being really effective two years ago, which led all the kindergarten teachers to say, hey, I think we all could, could use this. So we started to look into that.
Excellent, all right, thank you.
And I wanna thank our reading specialists who have been working with kindergarten. Um, they did a phenomenal job last year, they were real advocates of focusing on phonemic awareness and it's been really important. And the, thanks to the kindergarten teachers who really have been strong advocates for the, recognizing the need for this, um, it's been really strong. So they've been very aware of the shift in students coming into the classrooms and kindergarten. So I think this is really gonna help. Um, another program is our science program, I've talked to, to you about this several times. Um, last year we looked at thirteen programs and we looked deeply at three of them by doing site visits, um, and talking to vendors. And then we settled on one, which is a really great program, um, in terms of its design, it's very hands-on. It has students thinking about, um, thinking like scientists. It's a really rigorous curriculum that has strong vocabulary and that was a worry of the teachers at first, it's the vocabulary is really intense for kids from first through fifth grade. But because of the design of the curriculum, students actually are learning this vocabulary. Uh, when I walked into this particular classroom, this is a second grade classroom, uh, Betsy Heinen Girls' Kids, they are studying erosion. So all of the programs start with a text, every unit, there's nine units and each one starts with a text and you read about a particular phenomenon. And so these students were reading a story about erosion. And then students start studying the problems with erosion and then they have to solve a problem and, with a partner. And they actually have to design two prototypes. When I was walking in, when they were designing their prototypes and they asked the kids what they were doing, they actually are using that vocabulary. They say, well, we had to design two prototypes, so we're working on that now and we're drawing our models of the prototypes. And then they actually do the, the designs and test out their solutions to the problem. And the students are really engaged and loving this program because they're, they're, they're feeling like they're scientists studying something. And I watched the experiments, I've watched the discussions that kids have had around those introductory readings and they're using really sophisticated language and the teachers are noticing that, like, wow, kids are really learning the vocabulary.
Because they're interested in the content.
They're interested and they're learning it in context of something.
Yeah.
So, and then they're using this vocabulary over and over. One thing we learned through our study of literacy and the way students learn vocabulary, you need to have twelve to fifteen exposures to a new word within a short period of time in different contexts in order to really learn that new vocabulary. And what I'm seeing in the science is that they're using that over the course of this unit, students are using this vocabulary over and over and applying it. So they're remembering the vocabulary. So this is something we're piloting right now, this is a, a particular program where we're piloting two teachers per grade level, um, from first through fifth grade. We're not doing kindergarten now because you just saw they're doing Hegarty and they have a lot of literacy work on their plates. So we're not involving kindergarten at this stage yet, we will at some point. Another program, these are the math intervention programs I mentioned earlier in my presentation. Our math specialists at both Coman Hill and Wampus have been working really hard to study various interventions, which would be our tier-two and tier-three interventions when students need support in mathematics. Um, and last year they studied some programs and did a site visit to a school using both of these programs and thought they seemed really effective. So, um, we're in our first year of the pilot, we will continue this pilot next year. Coman Hill is using Bridges and Wampus is using Do the Math and now for next year, they're gonna switch and each look at the other pieces to see which ones might be better with different grade levels. Um, the school we visited used one with early elementary and a different one in the upper elementary. So we were sort of looking at that model first, but we might switch that up depending on how our kids respond. These are both really strong programs that really build up the skills with kids and have, um, assessments that have pre-assessments and post-assessments and tools to monitor students' progress along the way to see if we've actually, um, addressed the, the needs that they had and the weaknesses in their skills. Um, you've heard us talk about Character Strong and I wanna thank Gina for working with the team of our Coman Hill and Wampus uh, to choose this program three years ago, I believe. So we're in the third year of piloting this program at Wampus and the second year at, uh, Coman Hill. And it's, being taught, these are lessons that are taught by our guidance counselors and they go into the classroom and teach lessons. Um, at Wampus in third grade, it's through the encore program. Um, it's a very strong program that's really flexible. This program has lesson plans that can be done daily, weekly or monthly and can be adapted in a lot of ways. It has lessons around, um, there's a trait of the month and those are some of the character traits that are introduced to students. Respect, empathy, uh, honesty, gratitude, courage, and there's lessons around those. It can be used with full, it can be used with full class, it can be used in small groups. Um, and so the feedback, Gina and I were just meeting a few weeks ago with the teachers to debrief and evaluate it and the feedback's really strong, so Gina and I will most likely, uh, bring this to you later this year to adopt it. I feel very good about it. And then we had a need in our middle school for, um, a curriculum program for some of our students who have some extreme learning needs with, um, autism. And, um, that is at a level that can meet their needs. So kids coming in to sixth grade recently, so Colleen O'Connor worked with a team to evaluate various programs and came across Readopia that has a lot of, um, different aspects of the curriculum that can be really flexible with kids who have some severe learning needs. And so this is a curriculum we're just piloting this semester, so they spent the fall looking at programs and now we're starting to implement it. So it might take us a little time, um, to try this in various contexts. And I'll certainly come back to you, should there be interest in, um, looking more deeply at this. And then also you've heard me talk about our MTSS design team, this again came out of work from our literacy study last year where we're looking at our process for how we recognize students who are falling below grade level and provide them the intervention services to be proactive and build up their skills to get them on grade level. One thing we identified through our assessment audit was that we needed a universal screener that could be more easily implemented than the current tool we're using, which is iReady. iReady's doing well, but it takes a long time. Um, each assessment, both at reading and math, take about two hours of time. That's a long time for a screener, a screener should be quicker. Then you could go deeper into other assessments, um, to diagnose the specific skill where students have the need. So we're starting actually, um, on Thursday, Kevin Guadadi and I are leading a team to, um, look at some universal screeners with the hopes of piloting one next year. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that we may be doing that next year.
Is this K-five, K-twelve?
Um, K-five mainly, but it's actually a K-twelve team we're bringing together because we may wanna do screening at the middle school and high school as well. Um, sometimes, for example, we have students coming into the high school from other districts. Um, and we need tools to figure out how, you know, where to place students and what their learning needs are. So that comes up on occasion and we have individual ways, we do that, every department has their own tool that they use. It would be easier if we could just give them one screening tool that's actually research-based and then that could give us a lot of data on what, where to place that student. And then we're also, particularly at the high school, need a social emotional screener as well to help with students coming in that we don't know. You know, we have the advantage of most of our community students being with us a long time and we know them and we can pick up the phone and call the middle school and say, hey, tell me more about what's happening with this kid. Um, but we have a kid coming from the outside, we don't know that, so we're looking at a social emotional screener as well.
And the advantages of, of the shorter screeners than iReady is you can actually use that as a data point every six weeks to monitor where are we now, you know?
Yep.
Whereas with iReady, you're not gonna be giving them four hours of assessments every six weeks to see how they progress, nor does it really do that.
Universal screeners really to say, okay, these eighty percent of kids are doing fine, they're on grade level, here's twenty percent we need to dig deeper with.
Yeah. And this is what we need, right?
Yeah, so let's assess them and the diagnostic tool, oh, they need this, this and this, and then monitor their progress. So we're gonna be looking at a series of tools as we build up our MTSS, uh, process to, because right now, we, we did the assessment audit in December, um, through our, uh, our MTSS team. And what we realize is we have a, a huge array of assessments being given by teachers, all with good intent. But teachers are just on a treadmill, working really hard and assessing and we don't have a unified system.
Criteria.
And, yeah, criteria or assessment system, so we want that to be universal. This is what we use across the board, so we're all using the same research-based tool. And then here's the intervention that happens when students are falling behind and our schedule for how we assess them throughout the process.
And it clarifies which students really should be in an integrated co-teach class and, right? Like that, everybody's looking at the same criteria and the same-
Exactly, and when I, I mentioned tiers before and I'm throwing out these terms that I expect you to remember what they are, but
Yeah.
Um, when we talk about intervention, tier one is general education, it's all students getting differentiated instruction and the teacher adapting to meet your needs and your needs and your needs. Um, when students get a little further behind, a grade level behind, you wanna go into tier two. Tier two is usually small group, anywhere from three to five students, working with a specialist, being pulled out, not during instructional time, but some other time to get some instruction on a couple days a week. If, um, students aren't progressing, they may go to tier three, which is more one-on-one and more intensive.
But these are students who are, who don't have IUPs.
Exactly, this is a process to put in place before then a student might be referred to the Committee of Special Education. This is to see if we can get them caught up, um, uh, before or if they're, if students aren't progressing, that could mean there is some other learning disability happening and let's assess them and evaluate them more deeply. Yeah, exactly.
And then they would have the full evaluation that would-
Exactly.
Determining if they should be in the co-teach class.
Exactly, yeah.
Tim, I, I think you made reference earlier today, but are we also implementing some assessments that can identify, uh, you know, advanced students or students that need or require-
So part of a, part of our criteria for a screener is, and when we talk about multi-tier system of supports, we tend to think students are falling behind, I've even used that language. It could also be identifying learning needs for advanced learners as well. So part of the criteria when we look at a screening tool is that it will give us a range and it could identify students that are advanced. We currently are using iReady for that as well at Wampus to identify students for the advanced learner program and that.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks for asking.
And not the only criteria, right? I mean, like you have to-
It's multiple, it's one measure and you never wanna rely, all the literature says, don't rely on one tool.
Right, yeah.
So you screen students initially, but a teacher may say, hey, this kid, you know, the screener said they were okay, but I'm seeing something here. Let's di- let's diagnose, let's dig a little deeper and give a more detailed assessment. So it's a complex system, but we're trying to map out those, we call it a flow chart in MTSS language. It's a decision tree of, you know, is you screen and then did they do screening?
If this, like that.
Yes, no, exactly. And I love flow charts, I loved it since high school when I started programming in Basic Language. It was fun to do the flow charts, it's very logical. So this is fun to design in MTSS, it's like, oh, this is like, great.
Like diagramic sentences.
You're right, so, um, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
So, love you for doing, thank you for your support.
Thanks, Tim.
Kelly, Dana, any, any more reports? No? More reports? I was at the, um, BHEF meeting and just a couple of little things. Um, they hosted a successful event on the superintendent's conference day. It was a great ninja event, the kids had a great time. Um, of course, the hugely successful Wizards event, it's always a crowd pleaser.
Oh, it's so good.
So that's great and, um, they are, I believe the BHEF is coming to do a virtual, as you said, Jen said, a, a walkthrough of the Lights Learning Action Project on April eleventh. And they're also planning their spring bash on May third at Tamrec. So that's in the works too and it's, I've seen some stuff on social media, so I think tickets are becoming available.
Bless you.
Bless you.
And the gala really raises the funds that keep our school cutting edge, so you give time, you can get people, you know?
Yeah, it's always a great event.
It's a fabulous event, great fundraising and really helpful for our, our schools and our district.
And this Thursday, I have my two superintendent assistants who are going to be with me.
Oh.
Superintendent Dan.
They want that. For a day, superintendent for a day.
Yes, we did that at the auction. We have a lot of work to do on Thursday.
That's the worst, good.
As a matter of fact, the board members are going to Wampus for the board, for the walkthrough, right, of the building, the tour and they will be, uh, docents.
Oh, that's awesome.
And we're- I can't make that one, I can't do it Thursday. Unfortunately.
Thank you, Melissa, anybody else? More reports, no? Communications to the board? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the board minutes?
So move.
I have to abstain.
Second?
Oh, Scott has the first one.
Partway abstain.
One and a half extensions.
I don't know how you record that.
Sorry, sorry, Scott.
He was there, he was there.
He was there, once he come, yes.
He was there, you're there.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.